All right, I want to welcome everybody here and at home to the St. Louis Park School Board's Study Session for March 10th, 2014. We're going to start tonight with a spotlight on the High School ACT Award, and we'll kick this off with Joanne Keritoff, the principal of the high school.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Metz. Last Monday, we got to go to the Minnesota Department of Education where ACT, for the first time in Minnesota, is giving an award for college and career readiness. We were up against eight different schools in the metro, and lo and behold, we won. So, very exciting.[55.44][55.44](APPLAUSE). It's the first one in Minnesota, and there are only eight others -- well, we are one of eight schools in the country to receive this honor. And so, we will be going in June to Washington DC to see if we've won it nationally. So, right now, I'd like to introduce Greg Goddard and Kara Mueller, who are overseeing our college and career readiness initiatives in the school, to kind of introduce what we do and why we were nominated for this award.
Good evening, and thank you. St. Louis Park was nominated for this award because of showing student growth towards meeting ACT's college and career readiness benchmarks. And I'm sure everybody knows that our really successful ninth grade program, our BAR program, has a very high success rate of passing students. And your passing all your classes in ninth grade is a benchmark to showing you're ready for college and career. And the other one was aggregate ACT scores and the percentage of students meeting the ACT college readiness benchmarks. And what you also know is St. Louis Park and the state of Minnesota beats the national average on ACT scores. Demonstrates success in serving students of underrepresented racial and ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds. Dedication by administrations and teachers in ensuring that students gain the knowledge and skills needed to prepare them for success after high school. And the school's commitment to providing leadership opportunities for students outside of the classroom. All of which our school, the whole entire high school definitely should be recognized for this award. And so...
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that there's many people within the school that are part of making college and career readiness a priority here at St. Louis Park High School. And there's too many people to list and name. I mean, really, I think we might leave someone out. So, we do have many programs that are in place, but I think we also are looking at ways in which we can always improve in this area. And at some future point, we might come before the board and give you information about how we think we might be able to strengthen this part of our programming and make it even more a part of, basically, the culture of the school. And make it a part of each and every one of our goals is to get students ready and prepared for life beyond St. Louis Park High School, because that's really what we're going to need as we move forward in the 21st century economy. So, nice award, and hopefully, we'll win in DC as well.
Congrats to the high school.
Yes.[226.23][226.23](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations. It is well-earned. You folks have done a great job at the high school. What a good team we have, and our students are so blessed to have your energies and your work on that. I'm going to read our agenda. We are formally called to order. And the agenda for tonight begins with the superintendent's report. Then we have study session topics: all-day kindergarten task force update, the 2014-2015 calendar changes/ amendments, the 2013-14 school closures makeup day, the high school annual report, the fiscal year 2015 integration revenue budget update, the school board 2014-2015 tentative school board meetings, the quarterly budget update. We have a consent agenda, and we have an action agenda, which includes approval of tentative school board meeting dates for 2014-2015, 2014-15 calendar changes approval, approval of employment contract children first coordinator 2011-12, 2012-13, 2013-14, and 2014-15, approval of tentative employment contract Park Association of Teachers 2013-2014 and 2014-2015, approval of changes to citizens' bank accounts and signers, and approval of the 2013-2014 school closure makeup day. After that, if we're still awake, we will have communications and transmittals.[328.41][328.41](LAUGHTER). And then, we will see if anybody wants to adjourn, and we'll go home. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jim, seconded by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Stained? The agenda has been approved. First up tonight, we have the superintendent report.
Thank you. I'm going to read my superintendent report this evening. You've likely heard in the news media, or from me personally in recorded phone calls, about the incident that took place at the middle school pool during physical education class on Thursday, February 27th. St. Louis Park Public Schools and the entire community continue to mourn the passing of seventh-grade student Abdullahi Sharif. Tonight, I can tell you that both the school district and the St. Louis Park Police are conducting investigations into the circumstances surrounding this tragedy. As a district, we focus on helping students and families, staff, and the greater community heal from this terrible tragedy. Councilors will remain at the middle school as long as they are needed. The school district and the community continue to look for ways to support the family, as well as students and staff, now and in the future. The district has set up a fund at Citizens Independent Bank. Donations can be dropped off at any Citizens Independent Bank location, or you may send the donations to Middle School Student Fund, Care of Citizens Independent Bank, 5,000 West 36th Street, St. Louis Park, Minnesota, 55416. This has been a difficult time for the middle school and our school district. We appreciate everyone's patience as the police and the school district complete their investigations. We will share information as it is publicly available. On behalf of the school district, I offer the deepest sympathies to the family of Abdullahi and everyone impacted by this tragic loss.
Thank you, Rob. On behalf of the school board, on behalf of all of the school board, I want to echo the superintendent's comments. We are deeply saddened by the loss of one of our students. And at this time, I would like to ask all of us for a moment of silence to honor Abdul Abdullahi Sharif. Now, we will resume our school board's study session. First up, we are going to talk about the all-day kindergarten task force update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Metz, and members of the board. We are here today. We've had a number of all-day kindergarten task force meetings. As a matter of fact, we've had four, and they weren't short meetings, so we have had 24 hours' worth of meetings plus a field trip up to Sauk Rapids as part of this task force. So, these people on our task force have been very dedicated to doing this work, and we're not done yet. We still have several more meetings to go. But we wanted to give you an update of where we're at so far. So, I'm going to introduce a couple people from our task force. And first, I'm going to introduce a couple people from our audience. We have Allison Nicolich. She's a kindergarten teacher at Peter Hobart. Clarence Pollak, of course, our principal at Aquila. And then, up here to help us present tonight, we have Chelsea Collage, kindergarten teacher at Aquila, and Kim Russell, who is an early learning teacher at Central. So, I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea now, and they are going to do the presentation.
So, you got it? Okay, thanks. Hang on. Okay. So, during our time with the kindergarten task force, we've had four goals. The first was to develop and support district definition of kindergarten readiness. So, with the preschool teachers and the kindergarten teachers together, Kim will share a little bit of what we've come up with so far. Investigate current all-day kindergarten best practices and design a district program based on evidence with high rates of student growth indicators. The third goal and objective was to recommend kindergarten entrance and exit assessments. And lastly, create parent information guides and teacher materials that outline expectations for students, for educators, and for stakeholders. So, these are the intended outcomes for our task force, and we believe that we are really on our way to design a world-class all-day kindergarten program for St. Louis Park.
One of our first tasks as a group was to research and develop a definition of kindergarten readiness. We believe it's important to clearly communicate with our families, caregivers, educators, and other stakeholders that we have a common definition of kindergarten readiness. So, parents and families are a child's first and most important teachers. Working together, parents and the community do many things to prepare children to succeed in school. Kindergarten readiness is defined as the skills, knowledge, behaviors, and accomplishments that children know and can do in these areas of child development: social and emotional, academic skills, creativity in the arts, cognition and general knowledge, physical well-being, and motor skills. We are also working on further expanding this definition by creating parent resources with examples and additional information about how best to prepare young children Our overarching mission is to design a district-wide kindergarten program that ensures all schools have common expectations for students and offer common experiences. To do that, we've shared ideas. We've met with experts such as Dr. Deb Peterson in the area of literacy, Dr. Megan Cox, Annaleen Nelson in kindergarten readiness, our own Nate Tangen in technology, and Mark Miller in science. So, using our resources, knowledge, and expertise to create a framework to outline instruction and outcomes for all district kindergarten teachers to use for planning meaningful learning opportunities for all of our students.
As Lisa mentioned, we were able to go on a field trip, and we went to Mississippi Heights Elementary in Sauk Rapids, Minnesota. During our time there, we were able to see their core math time, in which they spend 60 minutes on math, and then, we were also able to see their reading intervention time as well. We learned some great ideas on how to facilitate whole group and small group instruction in both reading and math, intervention in reading math, and just kind of their basic expectations, you know, time spent in the different subject areas. As many of us know, kindergarten's changed drastically over the past couple years with a much stronger emphasis on academics, and we were really able to see how they were able to provide an academic rigor, but still making it fun and developmentally appropriate for all kids. And we felt that this field trip was really helpful to the work that we're doing on this task force, because we were able to see things that we were already doing and how to make those things even better. I think one takeaway from this experience that I personally have was just how on the same page they were, not just within a school, but district-wide, and that they really set high expectations for all students. And I guess the second takeaway I had was their intervention time. It was something I haven't seen done yet, and I felt that it wasn't just applicable to kindergarten, but all grades. And so, I really look forward to having the opportunity to share that, not just with kindergarten teachers, but school and district-wide, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Ms. Collage?
Yeah.
You stated that they were all together, I think it was, the district and everybody. Can you expound on that a little bit?
Yeah. So, what they have is they have scope and sequences for both reading and math, and so, everyone in the district is wrapping up. For example, we use math expressions for our curriculum. So, everyone's doing Unit 1 finished by a certain date, so that they make sure that they have everything they need to be taught by the end of the year. They also have ways of sharing ideas, you know, we're trying this in math, and they can kind of pull similar things, as well as their intervention time. So, what they do is they have 40 minutes a day for literacy intervention and 30 minutes for math intervention, and so, kids go from the different classrooms to other classrooms to meet the needs of whatever they may have. So, for example, if it's letter sounds they're working on, they go to a specific classroom to work on that, and when they've had that met, then they move on to the next group. So, they've worked really hard, and they've had a lot of meetings together across the district to get to that point, which was cool, so.
What I would add to Chelsea's comments is there are multiple elementary schools in that district, just like we have here. And in the building that we visited, they have seven kindergarten teachers. And what was great for us to see is they all had the same expectations for outcomes, but every teacher went about it a little bit differently, based on their own personality and based on the needs of the students. So, they had the flexibility to do what was necessary, but yet, the outcomes remained the same, which is kind of the model that we are trying to emulate, to have common expectations for all kids and meet them where they are. Which leads me into the slide about assessment, another one of our objectives on the task force. IGDS is an assessment tool that we are already using in early learning, and FAST is an assessment that we are already learning in elementary school. Both of those will continue to be part of our repertoire. We're still looking at other examples of what exactly is it that we need to know about kindergartners at the very beginning of the year, so that we can assess their needs and, if necessary, intervene very early. One of the things we learned at Mississippi Heights is that they start interventions, and they start small group instruction, and they call it "win time" when they do those interventions, in October. And so, we are looking at ways that we can do that as well, but what kind of information do we need to be able to do that? And then, also, at the end of kindergarten, what kind of information do we need to collect to pass on to first grade, so that first-grade teachers can also be judicious about ready and ready for kids that might come to them in the fall with a whole variety of needs, whether it's below grade level, on grade level, or above grade level? So, we'll continue to use IGDS and FAST, and might be adding a couple of other components to that give us the missing pieces that we don't currently have.
Two integral components of our all-day kindergarten framework are literacy and math instruction. And so, this slide that you can see represents a snapshot of the information that we want included in our framework. So, in addition to time expectations, for example, 90 minutes spent on reading and 30 minutes on writing, as well as the 60 minutes in math, it also provides curriculum and teacher resources in the framework as well, so that teachers have a bank of information to draw on for planning instruction and assessing learning. One, you know, I know, like, a lot of parents, I always hear, 90 minutes of reading, what does that look like? You know, and we've talked a lot about whole group and small group, and how to provide the instruction that we need within the 90 minutes. Obviously, no five-year-old's going to go sit and read a book for 90 minutes, so what does that look like? And we've talked a lot about balance, the balanced literacy approach, read aloud, shared reading, independent reading, writing, word study, which would include phonics, phonemic awareness, sight words, vocabulary, those type of things, so that they have, you know, instruction in the different components of reading, so.
We're also working on developing a sample schedule to fit in that 90 minutes of literacy and that 60 minutes of math. We are building a schedule around those two components. We feel those are foundational parts of our day, and working around that to include, you know, an IB focus or an integrated unit of study focus at our Spanish immersion school, and the other important pieces of a more robust kindergarten, which also includes timeless specialists. So, at the IB schools, students will get music, FIED, Spanish, and media. They'll get FIED every day. And at PSI, they'll be getting music, FIED, media, and Spanish reading intervention, for lack of a better way to describe it. So, there'll be some consistency in that way as well. If you kind of just start at the top left-hand corner and then go into the second column, that would encompass a pretty robust day for kindergartners and for teachers. And we are striving to be very purposeful about how that time is spent. You guys like snack time? Is that what it is?
I was noting the absence of a nap. I think we had a nap and a half day when I went to kindergarten.
That's true, yeah. That's true.
Just a question on that schedule, and I was thinking nap, too, even when it was only a half day. We napped. Will it really, and Chelsea Collage's comment may have been directed, half answered my question, will it really look like this, like, to a student's perspective? I know I'm doing reading now, I'm doing, now I know I'm doing math? Or will it be more, we're talking about gardens this week, and we're counting the seeds, and we're reading about gardens, and we're learning how things grow. And so, you're doing math and science and reading, but you aren't necessarily saying, you know, for the next 30 minutes, we're doing math, and labeling it such.
Do you want to answer that, Chelsea? You don't mean to. Go ahead. Okay. Just want to answer. You're right, Julie. It'll look much more connected, much more authentic. I would not envision a group of kindergarten students sitting in a chair, reading a book about seeds, but you may be working together as a whole group, learning about seeds, and then planting some seeds, and drawing some seeds, and trying all different kinds of things. So, it's very much in line with our IB thinking and with our integrated units of study thinking, and it's developmentally appropriate. The rigorous part comes in when we think of it from the instructional point of view when we're planning as teachers, on not just assuming that reading and math are incorporated into gardening, but being very intentional and purposeful about how we incorporate those skills into the big idea.
So, obviously, there were some goals and objectives that we haven't gotten to yet, so we have a couple more meeting dates on the agenda. So, these are our next steps with the all-day kindergarten task force. Curriculum decisions, finalizing scope and sequence in literacy, math, science, and social studies. We're working on that right now, specifically with math, so that we can get through all the units in the math expressions curriculum. Updating the international Baccalaureate planners at the three IB schools, and then, the integrated units at Park Spanish Immersion. So, as part of our routine that we already do when you wrap up a planner or theme unit, you know, reflecting on that, what worked, what didn't, what did, you know, students really enjoy, and, you know, making sure that the next time that we have that planner, it's even better. So, that's part of our ongoing process as well. And then, also, the entrance and exit assessments will be on the agenda as well.
As I mentioned before, we're going to create additional support documents for families and for teachers to really try and come across, very uniform throughout the district, making sure screening has it and other things, so our parents are fully aware of what skills are necessary in order to enter into kindergarten, to continue professional development, what that's going to look like, and also to improve and work on these new pre-K kindergarten and first-grade connections. As a matter of fact, we are taking this presentation on a roadshow and visiting each site and sharing them with our findings and what our further work entails.
So, to wrap up, just want to make sure everybody remembers that kindergarten roundup is next Tuesday, March 18th, and parents are getting packets sent home to them and to come with your immunization records and your birth certificate, your screening. So, it's going to be fun. And finally, I just wanted to thank our task force members. I've already introduced the people who are here today, but we just wanted to point out that we do have two kindergarten teachers from each school and three people from our early learning department, as well as Clarence, Carrie, and myself, working hard. Any questions? Any more questions? Ken?
Carrie, I'm interested in a child arriving, starting kindergarten this fall. What's the best indicator of success for that child? Is there a certain number of vocabulary words, a certain number of books being read to that child? I see heads bobbing up and down. That's good. I'm just interested in, if a child has a thousand-word vocabulary or has been read...
Times 10, yeah.
It's 12,000, actually.
It's 12,000.
12,000 words.
12,000 words.
If they have, we call them book handling skills, if they're familiar with books, if they know what a cover is, how to orient the pictures in a picture book, if they know that turning the pages means that the story continues. Those kinds of things are really important, alphabetic skills.
How many books does a child have to have read to him before those skills are achieved? Is it 1,000, or...
Well, research would say that if you read about 15 minutes a day, students are exposed to a million words a year. And then, we want those words to be more robust as kids get older. The books in the early years are very simplistic, but about eight books a week is a great kind of gauge for families to keep in mind, that if you read about eight books a week, kids will be on track for kindergarten readiness.
Not Eight Harry Potters.
Not Harry Potters, but things like The Pokey Little Puppy, those kinds of things. That one comes to mind, because that was my son's favorite book, and I think we read it at least 1,000 times.
He knew it by heart.
He knew it by heart, and that's kind of an appropriate developmental thing. Sometimes, we hear that from parents, that they're just memorizing the words, but that's okay. That's what they should be doing when they're five.
I'm personally into "Make Way for Ducklings," but...
Okay.
I'm just interested in how much we get this out to the community. How are we making them aware that if you do this, then your child will arrive with 12,000 words in his or her vocabulary? How can we make sure that word gets out? Read eight books a week to your child. That's what you need.
Well, one of the first steps we are going to do is to make sure that, you know, we were all on the same page as to what is kindergarten readiness and then, what can we do? So, now that we're getting to that place, the next step is, as Kim mentioned, is working with our parents, and so, I was like, Ken, you might have some more ideas.
Making sure all our early learning programs have the same information, not just ECFE, but Early Childhood Special Education, Kids Place, Creative Play. Also, our partnerships with Perspectives or Meadowbrook. Early childhood screening, definitely, because every child has to be screened before they enter into kindergarten. We've also have developed partnerships with certain physicians in the district, making sure they have the information, and...
And a partnership with daycares in the district.
Oh, daycares as well, yeah.
And Friends and Family Daycare. So, that's all part of our plan moving forward, now that we've got some real solid things we can start working on.
I also want to address, too, the readiness, because I know Chelsea and Allison would agree to, basic self-help skills. Can your child put on their own shoes? Can they zip their coats? Can they put on their hats and their gloves? Can they put them in the locker? Can they handle their lunch tray? So, can they handle a plate from home? Are they cleaning up after themselves at home? Are they putting things away? All those basic self-help skills that we work on every day in preschool.
And kindergarten.
And kindergarten.[1769.11][1769.11](LAUGHTER). Ken's got a question.
Okay. Mine was "It Takes a Village" by Maya Angelou. But I was wondering, I see that you have the connection with pre-K, K, and first grade, and then, you had that form that you would fill out and send it on to the first grade. But I didn't see a representation on the board for first grade. Is there...
That's phase two of our task force. Right now, we are just working on the... Right now, we are just working on the transition into kindergarten, because that's our time-bound kind of priority right now. And so as we continue the work of the task force, we will be inviting first-grade teachers. Actually, the roadshow that Chelsea mentioned that we're going to be doing at each of the elementary schools, the site, is with kindergarten and first-grade teachers together to start soliciting their feedback about where we are and what they need to know and what they can contribute to our next steps. So I don't have an answer for you now, I can just tell you that it's, there's a plan for that and there's a place for it in the work.
Well, I want to say my book was Good Night Moon. Although, at some, at some point, my son began to roll his eyes at me, and he was done with it before I was. So I want to thank you for all your good work on this. I think it's exciting work, and we really, you know, know at what page we're on, and we're going to be able to get everybody else on the same page going forward, and I think this is exciting for all our students, so thank you.
So you're staying put up there, I think, because next on the agenda is the 2014-2015 calendar changes amendments.
I am staying, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am just here to present you with the final, final version of the 2014-15 calendar revisions. You received the final version earlier this evening, I believe. Some of the important things to note is that on this version, the Thanksgiving holiday is indicated correctly, and that we have modified our early release and late start days to have one early release, one late start, and two full days of professional development to allow for flexible grouping and collaboration across schools in the district. And I'm here to answer your questions that you might have.
What are the two days, full days of professional development? Because some of the colors don't look, the coding may not have come out on our copy as well as yours.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So December 5th is a full day. It's a Friday, December 5th. And Monday, March 23rd, will also be a full day. So there'll be long weekends for families and regular five-day weeks for teachers. The late start date is October 20th, it's a Monday. It happens to fall after the MEA break. And then the early release date is May 18th, Monday, May 18th. In this version of the calendar, we increased our time that staff can get together for professional development, but did not change our student contact time and did not add or delete any teacher workdays. So teacher workday stays the same, student contact time stays relatively the same, maybe an hour difference. And just in case we have another interesting winter, we have at least four extra days for seniors and more than six for K through 11. I don't think we'll need six days again next year, but I would have said that this year too. So we have some flexibility if we needed to for next year.
And that was my main question, did we have enough days built in or have a Plan B if we needed to extend, needed to make up a day? Because as you said, we wouldn't have thought we needed it this year either.
Right.
And I don't know what that logically is. My only other comment on the calendar is, I think that is one that you were not addressing, which was the overall start and end dates. And I always think it's hard when we end on a Monday with just one day of school, then. Something we should probably try and avoid. I think we talked about that when agreeing with this, to this calendar, and if you take a full two weeks in, in end of December and New Year's, you end up bumping that, I think that's what often drives our last date. But, so that's a general caution as we go forward and look at future calendars. I like, you make some good points, I think we've, and this will be a good thing to try, to try the extended, having the full days for professional development instead of the short periods, and we'll see if that's more effective and beneficial for our staff.
I'll just kind of echo what Julie said, I think. I've gotten a lot of feedback from parents that the early release, late start days are just a complete hassle, and even from the teachers, that it's hard to have a good instruction period during those days. So I think that this new calendar helps with that. I think that's great that we're moving towards that. And then also, I mean, I have a preference for the one and a half weeks. I mean, I know we're not going to address it here, I'm not going to bring that up here, but for 14-15, but, you know, the week and a half for the winter break instead of two full weeks, might be a route we can go. We can avoid the polar vortex, maybe, but also avoid that, those two days that just sit out there. I know a lot of people have issues with camps and other things starting up during the summer, and those, those individual days at the end, that Monday and Tuesday, sometimes interfere with that. So that's something that I'd like to see us look into for 15-16, but I think what you're doing on the professional development days looks great. And Thanksgiving, I want to take it along with the rest of my family, so that's good that we're doing it on the same day.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think as far as the winter break goes, next calendar, for the 15-16 calendar, the dates will make it a lot easier to be making those choices. The last couple of years, the way the holidays have felt have fell, has made it difficult to try to do anything less than two weeks. So it's good that we can revisit that again in the next calendar committee.
I got a question. I think when we added the extra days, maybe, I think it was three years, professional development, it was like three years ago, I mean, I think we've heard since then that they've been very valuable, kind of anecdotally. Are there other ways we might be able to measure just how effective we're being, or how do you plan on measuring what's going on with our PD days and how effective they are, that then we can hear about it next time?
Well, one way we'll measure that is in our student achievement. But another way that we're measuring it, or trying to at least start to collect some evidence this year, is that we ask each site to record the activities that they do and how they are going to measure the evidence of those outcomes and what they're going to be doing with that information. We haven't collected that information in the past, so we've just started to do that this year, and at the end of the year and into next year, we'll be able to look at that and say, what was a good use of time and what wasn't a good use of time, and what kinds of ways can we get people together in meaningful ways? As the calendar stands now, it's very difficult, if not impossible, for middle school and high school to collaborate because of their start times and end times. So I think we'll also see evidence in how we collaborate and work with each other and build that continuum for kids, too.
This sounds like a great idea, and I'm looking forward to see how it plays out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our 2013-2014 School Closures Make-Up Day Revisited.
And that's me. Speaking of calendar, going back to this year, we need to make up one more day of school that we don't have scheduled yet, and I'm bringing a recommendation to the board tonight to make up that day at the end of the year. I have a, I'll explain that, and then I have a little bit of explanation around it. So adding a day at the end of the year for most of our students in grades kindergarten through 11th grade, that day would be June 11th. And you have a calendar in front of you, I believe, board members, that you received just tonight. The previous last day of school was June 10th, so just adding one more day, June 11th, for grades K through 11. Deciding what to do with the seniors was a little more complicated. We need to add a day for the seniors as well. Their last day was going to be Thursday, June 5th. That happens to also be the night of their all-night party. They don't have school on Friday the 6th or Monday the 9th, and they graduate on the 10th. So adding a day for seniors would be the 10th. They would need to be at the high school in the afternoon anyway for graduation practice, which usually begins about noon and would last until about 3:00. So this would be adding a morning session for the seniors on June 10th. We've just generally talked about coming up with a creative plan for that morning, gathering a group of students, gathering a group of parents, gathering a group of staff, and coming up with a creative morning for them. For example, they could possibly meet off-site, do some reflecting and reminiscing, have a brunch, and then come over to the high school for their graduation practice. So adding the day for K through 11 on Tues, or Wednesday, the 11th, adding the day for seniors on Tuesday, the 10th. Then that changes the teacher workshop schedule. Thursday, June 12th would be the workday for all teachers in the district. Friday, June 13th would be a workday and a professional development time only for the secondary staff. The elementary is off that day because one of the days that we've chosen to use for a school day now was an elementary comp day. So Friday, the 13th would be the elementary comp day, and it would be half-day of professional development and a half-day of workday for secondary teachers. So it's going to take us all the way through that second week of June. That is my recommendation.
As we know, there's, when we get to the end of the year, in those last few days, there's not a whole lot that goes on in the classrooms. It would be a two-part question. The one, first one, would be, how can we make the content or have content still going on in those last two days? And if we're, if we're not able to do that, assure that's occurring, could we visit adding 10 minutes to the end of the day or short time to the end of the day, until the end of the year and then leave the schedule?
Let me address the second part first. Adding minutes to the day or some other option like that, there were several options that would be a little more, trying to think of the right word, would be a little more...
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I don't want to use the word hassle, but...
More complex.
A little more complex. The reason I abandoned those is because they, there are pros and cons of each of them. I did talk to the bus company, and we, we worked out the logistics of what it would take to add time to the day and adjust the bus routes and so on and so forth. Each, each option had pros and cons, and we looked at a variety of them, and because there wasn't a perfect answer, I settled on, let's just add a day. The, the two things, or two or three things that I was thinking when I did that is, first of all, a day of learning is still a day of learning, and even though we're adding it at the end, which does make it more challenging, we have plenty of time to prepare for it. So the, the elementary schools and the middle school and the high school have lots of time to get ready. And secondly, there is some equality to it. It treats all students the same at every grade level. They all get an extra day, and all the secondary students get an extra day, and all staff work an extra day. And there's that feeling of equality, which, as I was looking at options, that was definitely an issue. I'm hearing from some parents that adding back that day is important to them. They want an actual learning day, and they looked at adding the extra minutes to each day as sort of a gimmick and wanted something more real. So that's the rationale I came to.
Well, I guess I share some of Ken's concern. I mean, if the seniors are done, I mean, they have their all-night party on the 5th, they're out now the 6th, that whole weekend, the 9th, and you bring them back for the 10th. I mean, if, I have a hard time believing we're going to have 5% of the kids here. I mean, I know, I mean, I honestly, and finals are over. So what learning's going to take place? Isn't there another day? I mean, I think the other option, the only other option today was, what, maybe Good Friday, or, but, you know, we might get a higher percentage of turnout then. Obviously, people who have religious conflicts would not attend, but that happens with other people at other times, and I just feel like, and then if you're going to bring it, you know, if they're going to have outside and have a brunch, I mean, or how much money would we really, are we losing by not having three hours of time? Let's balance that. I mean, really, what are we trying to accomplish here, so? And I'm not, it's not an easy, I mean, you know, we have these cards that are dealt to us. President's Day was already over when we got the last winter day, you know, maybe we could have gone President's Day and obviously, and have more meaningful learning, but I just don't know who you're going to get to show up, but...
Well, if they want to graduate, they are going to show up, and I don't necessarily believe that all of our learning has to be strictly academic in nature. I think how we learn to self-reflect and give back to the community and gather together as a community is, is just as valuable, and we've got time to figure out how it's going to be managed. So I'm, I'm optimistic that it's going to be a very well-managed, good day for everybody.
And I should add some of the concerns about, well, Good Friday's a good example. We have a variety of employee contracts, and that becomes an issue with Good Friday, President's Day, Martin Luther King Day, where for us to be able to have school on those days, we need to adjust some of our employee contracts, because right now, those days in some of our contracts are listed as paid holidays, and it makes it a challenge to renegotiate that, you know, impossible to renegotiate that at the, at the time you really need to. So long-range planning, we need to adjust some of those contracts.
Yeah, and I think as we go into negotiating on those contracts, you know, talked with Rob about looking at that language, and, you know, since some people got not, extra days paid, and then we had a contract problem that ran, we ran into with our day off that we wanted to use, we can negotiate rewriting that language, so that if you get, hopefully if you get a paid snow day, the district has the option on making that up, and we can do that hopefully in the future, that'll be good for all, for all learning, hopefully. And hopefully, by June, the snow will be melted. I was beginning to have some optimism today when it got above freezing, so maybe we'll be there. We'll come back to this in the action agenda. Next up, we have the High School Annual Report. We have High School Principal Joanne Kereta, and she has, I'm sure, we'll let Joanne introduce the parties with her.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Metz. We're here tonight to deliver our annual report to the board. With me tonight is Assistant Principal Myers and Director of Students Schweetering. We are going to be reviewing, you know, it is March, so we're going to be reviewing some of our data from last year, but then we also have first semester data that we'd like to share with you as well, and just talk about some of the great things that are happening in the high school. First and foremost, this whole presentation is centered around that all of our goals and plans are aligned with the district strategic plan and with the superintendent's vision on closing the achievement gap. All of our goals and are geared around these two areas. To show you a slide about what our goals were for this year, or are for this year, some of them we've already accomplished, some of them we're still working on. So this year for MCA proficiency, our reading goal for all students is that we have 88% proficiency in reading, and for our Black students in closing the achievement gap, we are looking to have 72% proficiency. In math, for the MCAs, we're looking for all students to have 69% proficiency, and for our Black students to have 44%. And something to keep in mind is that the 100% by 2014 with the No Child Left Behind has changed, and now we're shooting with proficient, or with percentage rates to gear us toward 2017. Our discipline for all students, we're looking to decrease by 5% this year of overall incidence, and we're looking for our Black students to decrease the incidence by 10%. And then our building PDP, this is our professional development goal within. Our, our goal this year was to increase the passing rate, switching the verbiage from failure rate to passing rate, and to increase it to 88%, 88.6%, which is a 2% increase over last year. Last year, our Black students achieved 86.6% passing rate in their classes. We're looking to increase it by 2%. So I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Schweetering, our Director of Students, to talk about the discipline.
Okay, so this slide that we're going to look at, we're talking about discipline incidences. And to explain what that is, is that's anything that is logged into Power School. So it could be a trip to the ISS, which would be in-school suspension for the last five minutes of class. It could be an out-of-school suspension where they're not able to be in school. So it's kind of a variety of different things. It also could be a conference. There was no actual time out of class. It may have been a conference that happened before school with the teacher and that student, things like that. So it's anything that was logged as a disciplinary action, but the outcome of it may vary on how we handled it. So what we looked at, at the high school, when we broke it down a bit here, is we looked at the discipline from two years ago, last year, and this at the discipline from two years ago, last year and this year. And we're looking, we're comparing first semester. So we just finished up first semester for us, end of January, actually kind of going into February with our days, but we looked at first semester. So we're comparing like data here. So when you take a look at that, we've had a pretty significant decrease over the three-year period. Last year to this year has been relatively close, but if you look from two years ago to this year, we've had a decrease by about 50%, which is huge for us. We wanted to break that down a little bit more and talk about our in-school and out-of-school suspensions. Ken?
I had a question. I know you explained how you're taking it now, how you're measuring. Was it measured the same way in 2011?
Yes, yes. You mean, measured as in what counts as an incident?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So what we wanted to do is take a look at our in-school and out-of-school and then be able to dissegregate the data, because that's important for all of us. And it's been a, a major focus for us at the high school. So one of the things that this tells us is that there has been a decrease for all students comparing the 11, 12 year to the 13, 14 year. And that there's been a decrease of 61% for Black students. So that's huge. And that really shows us a lot of good news in the sense that we've been really intentional about what we're doing in our building. And so this helps us show that if we are having a decrease for all of our students, and specifically, the largest decrease was for our Black students at 61%. Our Hispanic students was at 40% of the decrease. And our white students were 39% decrease. But that shows us that they're spending more time in the classroom. Because in-school and out-of-school suspensions are time that they are not in class learning. So that's why it's really important for us to gauge that and to be on top of that. And so really, at the high school, we are committed to making, to closing the, the gap in our discipline numbers. And this helps us, that it shows us we're making progress. So when we show these good numbers and we feel good about it, we still know we have a lot of work to do and we're committed to that. Last year, we had a group of students, along with some staff members, come together and create the OREAL Code, which has been something that has been really important to us at the high school. It's building that community and that culture around a uniformed commitment to learning and a commitment to who we are as being here at St. Louis Park High School. And so the students came up with the OREAL Code. And I, you hopefully have heard about it and have seen it before. But this really is helping us be able to have common language around how we're working with students. Not just disciplines, standpoints for sure, absolutely, it aligns, but also of what we do within our classes, to how we interact with each other and just kind of, as we move through our community at the high school here. The thing that, one of the other pieces that have been really important for us for decreasing our numbers in discipline has been restorative practices that we're using at the high school. And so there is a number, I mean, we are all committed at the high school of using it, but we have a number of people who are using it on a regular basis. And then that's been their focus to support students and staff in using it. And so that could be anything from mediations that occur, if there is a conflict that's happening in a specific class or with a specific teacher, that that gives students a voice and to be able to kind of repair and set up a plan for how we're going to move forward. So it's not just about getting them out of the class and, and holding them to a consequence. It doesn't mean that they won't have a consequence, but it does mean that we're working to build that relationship so that when they enter the classroom again, that they're more likely to be successful. The other thing that we, I feel like at the high school that we've been doing that has helped us with our numbers to show is they have, is that we've been very intentional. And we talked about, and I know you mentioned even with the calendar, with the PLC time, the, the professional learning communities that we have this time together. And we've been very intentional with the kind of questions that we're asking all of our PLCs to answer related to race, related to how we're actually delivering instruction and how we're connecting and building community in our classrooms and with our individual students. And that has been led by our professional learning team. We've played around with different names for that. It's been PLC as a committee, but there's a lot of acronyms in education, as we all know. So, but the professional learning team, which is a group of teachers who meet on a regular basis to drive kind of what the professional learning will be for our building and looking at the needs of our students and our staff and, and moving that way with it. So I'm just really excited about, you know, our data and what it shows us. And it also shows us where we still need to work. And we are well aware of that and we're working to, to do that. So pass it back to, oh, Mr. Myers.
I am going to go back just real quick to our OREAL Code here, just to give a little bit more context. I know we presented this last year as somewhat of a newer idea because it was established and kind of publicized more. I'm happy to say that it's become a little bit more ingrained in what we do and what we really want it to be as a backdrop for students to refer to. And I'll just point to a couple of stories that highlight some of the successes. In the past, we've had, as I think many high schools do, issues with theft of things that people say, well, it was just laying there. I thought I could take it. You know, I, nobody had it. I thought it was fine to pick it up. And we're starting to get more reports. And I hope this isn't just selective memory, because my office sees a lot of this. But I, I'm happy to say that this year, we've had a lot of, I found this iPhone 5, I just wanted to turn it in. One of my favorite stories this year is somebody came to me and said, I found this dollar bill on the floor and I don't know who it belongs to, but I think I should give it to you. So I'm happy to see and I, I'm hoping that it's part of the culture that we're kind of weaving into our high school. But I was very proud, needless to say, of the students who are stepping forward and doing that. We're also seeing some upstanders in our mediations, where we have students seek a mediation for a friend or students when going to mediation saying things like, I know I should have probably stood up for somebody. So at least we're getting that piece across and we'll continue to weave it into the backdrop of the high school. So I just wanted to touch on those pieces. The next part of the presentation, we're going to move into some of our reports for AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress. And I'll talk a little bit about some of our proficiency scores also. So the first slide that I'll move into here gives you kind of a, a three-year glance at how we've performed in terms of adequate yearly progress. And some highlights on here that may be missed at first glance is areas that you see where it says we met with safe harbor. If those have transformed into a met in 2012, 2013, that's actually an indicator of progress because the safe harbor, meeting by safe harbor was a little bit of a softer qualification than the met. So as you look at reading here, we're really, we're really proud of the results that we've seen in terms of adequate yearly progress. And it will be a little bit confusing as I move forward through these slides because we did have a new format for the reading test. So you will see a dip. And I'm going to actually move into a slide later that'll give you a comparison to the state. And I'll talk a little bit more about why those two are, are looking different at the time. The next slide here just shows you what our goals were previously. So Ms. Kereta have covered our current year goals. These were our goals for last year, as the title indicates there. And for all students, our goal was 87%. And for Black students, it was at 69%. When you see how we actually performed, which is where you see the three bars there, for all students, we had a proficiency rating of 60%. For Black students, we had a proficiency rating of 30%. And for white students, we had a proficiency rating of 75%. It's a little bit confusing, as I said, because the adequate yearly progress pieces that I just showed you before are talking about the progress students made and these are proficiency scores here. So what I'd like to do is build a little bit more context here and just show you how the high school compared to the state. And we'll see, it's hard to see in the room here. I'm hoping it's easier to see on TV. There's a yellow line there between this year and last year. And that yellow line indicates a new test format. And that's an important line to look at because although we're showing our progress over time, the scores this year do not directly compare to the scores previously. And so when, at first glance, you look at this and you say, there's some work to be done, which I would agree, there is. But some of that is working through how to prepare for the test and looking at our practices overall. So what I'd like to do actually, to talk a little bit more on a positive note, is take a look at some of the deeper data that we've harvested out of our proficiency scores here. And I know this is pretty hard to see here in the room, but I'll, I'll once again just give an overall summary. If we look at our scores for Black and white students, and the HS indicates our scores here in St. Louis Park, you can see that we've had a pretty consistent result for both Black and white students. And then once again, where you see the yellow line there where we've switched over to a new test category, you've seen a, a similar dip for both Black and white students. So some of the interventions that we're working on are taking a look at not just preparing for the test, but kind of the practices that we do district-wide. And Carrie Ross has joined us this year to help us in a curriculum review process. And what I'd like to do next is just move into our interventions here.
Scott, can you back up one before?
Sure.
Before you move on?
Yep.
That chart you're showing there, the green line that has MN in front of it, are those the state averages?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I did say what HS was. Yes, those are the state average scores.
So am I reading this correctly, that our scores are higher than the state average scores as I look at this chart?
Yeah, so for, for many years, it was. This last year with the new test format, you do notice a 4% change there for our Black students in particular. And so some people will question the statistic relevance of 4%, but obviously, it's something that we're taking into consideration regardless. And so, you know, you, you might say, well, we've kind of maintained a similar area, but yeah, it's, it's something that we're definitely looking at. And I'll talk a little bit to that in our interventions here.
And one more question, just before you leave all those charts. At the beginning, we talked about the reading goal.
Sure.
And I'm just, I can't tell which of these numbers that goal relates to, that 88% and 72%. Is it, which of the charts would I be looking at or is this the whole new test and we can't even compare?
Oh, good question. Are you referring to the slide way earlier in the presentation? Yeah, those are, those are our goals for this current school year. These were our goals for last school year.
But are they, are they looking at, I mean, if I'm looking at this chart and our goal for next year is 88% for white students and 72% for Black students, was our, what was our, our current, we, we achieved 75% this year and we're trying to get to 88. Is that what we're saying our goal is? And this is the chart that I would look at to compare those numbers?
Yeah, and the numbers, once again, go back to the proficiency breakdown of reaching 100% proficiency by 2017. So the, the percentages themselves are comparable. The results, however, comparing this year's results to the past year's results would be comparing different tests.
That's what's confusing me.
Yes, yeah.
And I'm still confused. And I can let you move on. I'll just tell you, somebody maybe later can make it make sense to me.
And so I'm going to piggyback on that because I think I'm looking at it the same way but different. But, so the test has changed, the results changed, well, the, the outcome was different. Is the test, was the format different that they took it in or was the test just that much more difficult?
It's a good question. One of the biggest changes was Common Core contents that were added. So there, there was some shift in kind of the standards behind what the test was. The format was, I would say, similar, but I think the, the, the content standards had shifted as part of what the requirements were for reaching proficiency.
So then the test did change?
Yes.
But our goal is the same?
This, this is a good question, yes. So the goal is once again based on kind of moving towards 100% by 2017. And the goals are, yeah, that, I'm sorry, the goals are driven by kind of reaching that proficiency. And with, even within our building, we know that these goals are lofty, but we definitely want to try to reach that 100% too. So there is a little bit of, you know, you look at it and you say, boy, that's a pretty large leap. But it's to keep on track for that 100% proficiency.
Just looking at the dip and I'm, I'm wondering how we're going to, first of all, get back to where we were, even though the test has changed. And then on top of the getting back to where we were, meet that next year's goal also, which we didn't meet this year. So it, it seems like a lofty goal, as you stated, but I just, realistic goal would be a nice one to see.
Sure. Yeah, well, what, what we're doing too, and this will be part of what the next slide looks at is, you know, it used to be we'd look at interventions as being kind of an instructional piece only. We're also looking at the high school at systemic interventions too. And I'll talk a little bit about that in terms of how we have blocks, how we create support for students, in addition to just alter what's, altering what's delivered in the classroom. And so we're hoping that we can make larger strides by taking that approach. We've had success in our ninth grade program. And we've started to see, and you'll see it a little bit later in the slides, with our passing rate, we've seen some large increases as we've moved it through 10th and 11th grade. And then also adding our NTA for our 12th graders has also created kind of a larger level of progress in graduation rate, which we'll get to later. So it is a little tricky as we look at our proficiency scores. We know it's a big thing to tackle, but we're trying to look at it holistically too, so that we're not just altering our instruction to meet the test, but we also want to reach our proficiency too. So with that, I'll move into our interventions here. And if we take a look here, and I'll just refresh our memory for people that are watching at home, the first tier interventions are things that are available for, should be available in every classroom and also throughout our building. I'll just add that piece because as I said before, we do a somewhat of a systems approach here with our interventions. And as you take a look, I've, I won't talk about everything, but we've highlighted some of them already. For example, Carrie has talked about restorative practices. But what I'd like to focus in on, and I started to talk a little bit about it, is our curriculum review process. Carrie Ross has done a great job of helping us so far just assess what it is that we're delivering now. And we're starting a process of comparing that to what we need to deliver and then taking a look at kind of a K-12 glance and even a pre-K-12 at times glance at how we can improve what we deliver in the classroom. The high school obviously comes in at the 9-12 portion of that. We're hoping that that curriculum review not only helps us standardize what we deliver in the high school, but also make a nice continuum for students that are entering the high school to join us to, to reach proficiency. Also with that, in the curriculum review process, our equity coaches are working from not only what we deliver, but how we deliver the information to the students, how our grading practices reflect how we value student needs. And our PLCs this year had worked in conjunction with our equity coaches to focus in on passing rates. And they worked on late start, early release days. And they worked during our professional learning times to focus in on asking ourselves those critical questions of how we deliver, what we deliver, and if we're meeting the student needs. And some of the observations that the equity coaches would do actually turn the observation not just on the teacher, but to the students and how they receive information from the teacher. So those are some of the pieces that we've looked at systemically for interventions. As we move up the list to the second tier, we have increased the student blocking philosophy in terms of how we schedule. And it used to be their 10th and 11th grade had somewhat of a virtual block. Now they're looking more like our ninth grade bar program where there's support blocks, there's advisors, there's risk review at all levels to touch base with students and find out not only who's failing, but how many classes are they failing? What interventions can we do to, you know, outside of just the traditional, let's call home, let's check in? We're talking a little bit more of, do they need mental health assistance? Do they need to work with our writing lab, which is in our learning lab? Do they need to check in at our math resource room? Looking at some of those more direct supports for the students. Then as we move into math here, you can see once again our three-year look at our adequate yearly progress performance. And as you look at this page, you can see that there's definitely some improvement and some good news, but obviously, there's some area for work here also. And I don't think we're unique in the sense that math is a focal point for our district. I think many districts are facing that right now in Minnesota. If we take a look at our goal sheet, goal slide again here, our goals this year were 65% for all students and 37% proficiency for Black students. And then as we move over to our results column, you can see that we had 51% for all students. And then, as we move over to our results column, you can see that we had 51% for all students, 16% for our black students, and 66% proficiency for our white student. And as I said before, math is a focal point as we move into this year. And I'll give you a little bit of a glimpse here, which shows a little bit more of a steady path in terms of our comparison to the Minnesota state average. And I'll highlight it, but you also notice the absence of a yellow line here. So, our math test has stayed consistent between last year and this year. So, these numbers are a little bit more comparable. And as we disaggregate the data here, you can see that the high school has, for the most part, performed above the state average. And as you look at our table on the bottom, we definitely have a focus this year of math proficiency overall, but we definitely want to focus in on how we can better serve our black students. As their score, you can see there was 16%. How we do that is, this slide might look similar, because as I said, we have some larger systems approaches. But with math in particular, we had a large discussion as a district, but also as a high school in terms of what our math instruction should look like. So, we're currently in a similar curriculum review process. Once again, with the help of Kerry Ross, we're taking a look at a district-wide glance of what we're delivering, comparing it to common standards, and then also searching out for strategies to best suit our students to increase their proficiency. Our equity coaches and our PLCs are focusing, once again, on passing rates, but there is definitely some intentional conversations, particularly in the math area, on how we can better deliver that curriculum, but also better support our learners as they approach the testing windows. All right, we're gonna move into our ACT scores, and I'm gonna turn it over to Joanne Keratoff.
Okay, so in looking at last year's ACT scores, this is a comparison chart that I don't think you have in your packets that show the state of Minnesota compared to St. Louis Park High School. And you'll see that in all categories but the Asian category, St. Louis Park is exceeding the state average on the ACT scores, which in part is that award that we received. It's, they not only have benchmarks in math, science, and English, and reading, but they also are looking at college readiness benchmarks. So, we, to disaggregate the data by race, we are right there along, pretty equal with Minnesota, but just a little bit higher. The next slide is really important and the focus of what we do within the day. This slide is showing the passing rates of our students. Like I said, we've shifted from failure rates to the discussion about passing rates. You can see that the ninth grade is, this chart shows two different things. It shows what our teachers are doing at each grade level. So, you can see at ninth grade where the building assets reducing risk, or the bar program, is supporting our students. This year, we implemented that 10th grade block. And you can see that, you can see that we've seen an increase in our students' pass rate with the focus on student achievement this year. You can see that 11th grade, we are piloting the 11th grade program right now. But 11th grade is always a year where, in the past, it never really had a lot of support. And then, we have some stuff in place, such as the non-traditional academy at the senior level, and we can see that increase rise again at the 12th grade. So, when we're looking at our data, this is our students passing the classes and working toward graduation. This is a pretty, this is where all of our work lies.
One thing that we've mentioned a couple of times throughout is the equity coaches, and that has been just really important to us at the high school and potentially will be throughout the district. It's something that we're having conversations around, but we feel really strongly about it, and so, we wanted to give it a little bit of time at the high school level here. So, part of where our equity coaches come out of is it's Q-COMP or ATPPS, which stands for the Alternative Teacher Performance Pay System. Q-COMP is the term that the state uses, ATPPS is something that St. Louis Park in-house that we use. And so, that is where, at the high school, what we have done is, towards the end of last year, we got together a group of people and talked to our staff, and we really felt strongly about really wanting to do something different and really wanting to target the gap, and that was our focus. And so, with that, we created the idea around equity coaches. And so, instead of having a number of bills, building leaders, instructional leaders, as other schools do, what we did is we created two positions, two full-time positions as equity coaches, and that's Joy Esbolt and Erica Merrick, who are two phenomenal teachers who then applied and were selected to be equity coaches this year. And so, their role is to coach staff and to work with students on getting feedback about what they need so that they can better coach the instructors. So, I'm gonna let Joanne talk a little bit about what our goal is, and then, we're gonna give you a little bit of, a small couple-minute clip about what the equity coaches are about.
So, at the beginning of the presentation, I talked about our PDP, or Professional Development Goal, at the high school for this year. We were looking at first semester scores of passing rates. And so, last year, as I said before, our pass rate among black students in trying to work on closing the achievement gap was 86.6% of our students passed all of their classes. And when you are getting higher and closer to 100%, you have smaller percentages that you improve by. And so, deciding where we were going to go and what we could achieve in a semester, we had a lot of discussion, because we wanted to keep the academic rigor there as well. So, we set the goal of increasing by 2% to become 88.6% of our black students passing their classes in the first semester. We actually surpassed that by a little bit. I think it was three students, we surpassed it. But we ended up having an 88.8% pass rate among our black students. So, our students and our teachers were, you know, finding success in focusing on what these equity coaches are working with them on, which is, you know, building relationships and student achievement. So, with that, we are going to show you a small clip about some, some comments, teacher testimonies about what the equity coaches are doing for them.
You know, the real positive of the equity model for me, as the coaching part's been, in the past, you know, Q-COMP has really felt like a bunch of hoops that I've kind of jumped through, I mean, things I would have done naturally in terms of my classroom. And, you know, strategies that I, you know, try to think about on a daily basis. But really, what the equity coaching has done for me is get me to think about questions that I haven't really thought about before. There's a real positive nature in trying new things to see if they could work. It's not so much about trying to fill out the paperwork and trying to get our check at the end of the year. It's more about like, what's gonna, what's gonna drive student growth?
So, I'm very grateful for this model and that I have this resource in the building for me, and nothing but positive things to say.
The staff I have talked to have definitely embraced this model, just because it gives us more conversation points to talk about as well, about things that we can do in our classroom to actually help the kids and improve.
Another thing that's been really helpful is we've received a lot of, there's been an equity blog this year. And both the coaches have created this blog with different articles. For example, there was an article on grit and resilience in students, and I just used that last week. Having resilience can go a long way in your lifetime and in school.
I think that the current model that we're using at the high school has some benefits in that there's a lot more intent, and it's not just about squeezing in our work with other teachers just so we can get it done. And so, the intent has been awesome. The two people for us that are doing it are certainly living this lifestyle. And from that standpoint alone, I think there's a whole lot more credibility to it.
I've been really honest with both Joy and Erica about some of my insecurities when facilitating a support group. And it was hard for me on some level to invite them in to the group. But I did, and I'm glad I did, because the feedback that I got from them was really helpful. And it gave me the confidence that I needed to know that I'm on the right path.
I think this year, it seems to be more personalized and more interaction, like, with your coach. So, it's more kind of purposeful, and there's more meaning behind the method this year.
One thing that has been really great, that Joy and Erica have really encouraged all of us to do, is to get feedback from the students, which I think is always a little bit scary, because you're asking your own students their thoughts about how you're doing as a teacher, how the lessons are going, but that has actually been very helpful, because it's helped more tailored to the needs of the students. It truly is coaching, because we're all, we're all kind of searching for our areas of growth where we can learn from each other, and then, we're learning from each other's strengths as well. So, a lot of us have been able to go into other classrooms and observe and get ideas from each other, and that's really positive too.
So, that's just a couple of minutes from a few of our teachers. And what I wanted to thank was Chris Weaver is the one that put this together. And I know that Erica and Joy, along with Rich and Keith, will be going to, Rich, Keith, and Kevin Jones will be going to the different schools and rolling this out and kind of on a little roadshow tour to talk a little bit about what equity coaching looks like. So, we've just kind of condensed it down and wanted to give you a little taste about what it is we're doing at the high school related to equity coaching.
So, with that, a few weeks ago, our graduation rates came out for last year. And as I presented earlier this year, the state looks at graduation rates in four, five, and six-year cohorts. So, these rates are strictly our four-year cohorts, our four, yeah, four-year cohorts. And you can see that comparatively to the state of Minnesota, we are doing well. We had 89% of our students graduate on time in four years last year. When we were looking at the achievement rate, or the achievement gap, we had 83% of our black students graduate on time in four years. So, with the pass rates and with the graduation on time, we are seeing a closure of the achievement gap in our graduation.
I have a kind of a comment and a question on that real quick. So, when I saw this last week, the thing that stood out to me, well, it's great across the board, but the thing that stood out to me the most was the English language learner's graduation rate actually being higher than the overall average for the school. So, can you tell me how we got to that? What type of things we're doing at the high school for English language learners that get us to that graduation rate?
Well, we have a program where we have two teachers, and they're mainstreamed in some of the classes. In some of the classes, they have their support classes. And the teachers just work really hard with the students on giving them the support that they need. But all of our teachers have a focus on our students, and that's changed significantly how things are done. So, having the relationships and the parent support is also key to success at the EL level. So, to highlight some of our overall achievements over the last year and toward the beginning of this year, Washington Post last year, in 2013, rated St. Louis Park High School the second highest public high school in the state of Minnesota. If you look at the thing, it actually shows that we're number three, but number one is a private high school. So, comparatively, public schools, we are number two in the state of Minnesota. As we highlighted this earlier this meeting, we received the ACT College and Career Readiness Transition Award for the state of Minnesota for 2014. We had nine out of our 11 IB, or International Baccalaureate Candidates, receive a diploma in the class of 2013. This year, we have 13 National Merit Scholars who we've honored earlier this year. And there are seven of them who are now moving on to the final scholarship. So, that's very exciting. They'll find out at the end of this year whether they receive the scholarship or not. We just celebrated at the last board meeting, the Boys Nordic Ski Team, winning second in state. Our Echo, which is our school newspaper and it's award-winning numerous years in a row, they received the National Pacemaker Award for 2013, and they were honored earlier this year for that. 29 high schools in the United States received that award, and so, we were one of the 29. Another thing that we look at is honoring our school, is looking at who supports us. And Cargill, we have had a Cargill grant regarding science in the elementary schools using our high school teachers. That has now expanded to the point where we're renaming it Park Sci, because we have other businesses and corporations who believe in what's working here at St. Louis Park High School. And our I-3 grant, or Invest in Innovation Grant, that has been renewed on different terms, but nonetheless renewed, they see the value in what we're doing. We are the flagship school for that. And we found out on the same day that we received the ACT award that we are now on the What Works Registry for the bar program. And that is a registry for businesses and organizations across the country. There's only 400, and you have to be invited to even apply. And it's rare that a school or a program that's in a school makes it on this registry. So, that is an honor to the bar program and the teachers that support our students. And with that, thank you very much to everyone, the community, the parents, the students, and the staff for the hard work that they do. We know we have work to do, but we are very excited and motivated to see what's to come. Questions?
I'd just like to add that not only did the boys finish second in the state, they were also academic all-stars too. And as I mentioned that night, when I see this list of academic credits that our school gets, you can keep the hockey tournament, you can keep the football tournament. I'll take this every single day of the week. This is what adds to this program that they're working on in the legislature called the World's Best Workforce. You put these kids out in the workforce, they're gonna do well individually. But they, it's the economics of it that it does for the country, the multiplier effect that these kids will take out into their communities. This is powerful stuff, and it's just what you're doing, and I commend all of you for the great work that you're doing. Greatly appreciated.
A question and a comment. I appreciate that we're working hard to change those numbers, because whether we're at the state average or not, we don't need to be average. And, you know, I know those, and those results in some categories were extremely disappointing, but I also know they happen across the state. Nonetheless, we need to keep going. So, specifically on the ACT scores, I would encourage you to look at those college readiness benchmarks and break it out, because the overall score is one thing, but to look at whether they're hitting that 23 in science or the 22 in social studies, and then, it's 18 in the other. And that might be a helpful diagnostic for us. Theoretically, it should be similar to what we're seeing on the MCAs, but maybe not. And so, and then, also, do you look at the Getting Prepared Report, the remediation rates at Minskew for?
The clearinghouse on?
It's, it's, it's not in the clearinghouse. It's a separate report, and it hasn't come out for a few years, because they're having trouble with the current data. But every two years, and you should be getting it this spring theoretically, it tells us what percentage of our, how many of our students had to take remedial math or language arts courses at, if they attended a Minskew, a Minnesota State College, or the University of Minnesota. And the, you can get the overall numbers. The report is publicly available. But the one that goes to the high school, to my understanding, includes the names. So, it says Julie Switzer had to take a remedial math class when she enrolled at Mankato State. And the reason I think that can be useful is, the idea is that schools can then look back at course-taking patterns or, you know, get more diagnostic to what, for particular students. Of course, names aren't out in any public report, but I would think that would be useful information.
Yeah, we'll look for that. I haven't seen that report before, so we'll absolutely look at that. But one thing that we are doing in some of our programs, like the non-traditional academy at the 12th grade, is we're giving the Accuplacer so that we can hopefully prepare students before they go into the college to, you know, to get them prepared on knowing whether they'll have to take those remedial classes or not, and then, helping support them and what they need to do at the high school to get ready for that.
A lot of that is making sure they take math in their senior year so that they aren't a year's worth of rusty by the time they get to the Accuplacer.
My question was around the math practice. All I can remember it is, is a practice MCA test that was taken about three weeks ago. Were you able to look at that information or that data? Were you able to look at that information or that data? I know it's different from the MCA because the questions are different and, and it's just a little different, but I was wondering, are we able to take a look at that, see how they scored out as far as the school goes?
I'm seeing Carrie shake her head.
We didn't take the OPAT at the high school. So, at the middle school and PSI, yes, but we did not offer it at the high school.
And that's something we could offer though, right? Because you can take it whenever you want to.
We could do it in the future. We just didn't do it this year. We started small.
Okay.
So, I think there's some good positives here and I'll be interested in seeing how our interventions work and obviously, we still need to have a little work to be done. And just so, there's no confusion on your second slide when you talk about the superintendent's vision of closing the achievement gap? I think I, I can speak for the board on that, that his vision is aligned with the boards and that we're all behind that. So, we are interested in, so keep presenting that data and we really look to see improvement. So, thank you.
I'm really excited about the work you've done to have the students be part of the process and I, I would like people to know that you're working with more kids and having better results with the discipline issues because our, our enrollment increased again. So, that is really significant work and I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is a, a good report with some areas for clear work that we, that you all know and you're starting to address, but you know, one thing we've learned being on the board, as long as we have and you already know this, is you look at multiple data points to gauge how something is doing. You don't just look at one and there are multiple data points here and so many of them are, are just very positive and show us on the right trend line. We just need to work some on the, the math and the reading proficiency scores and I know you will. So, thank you so much for coming tonight and really sharing the good news at the high school. The high school is alive and well and it's good to hear.
Yes, thank you.
Next up is the Fiscal Year 2015 Integration Revenue Budget Update and I see Mr. Metz heading for the podium, so I believe he's up.
Good evening, board members. I will do a quick introduction and then get some help here. This is Jared Chapman. He is the Director of Assessment and Research. I called you a director, that's a promotion. Assessment and Research Specialist, Pratchi's right-hand man. And he does a great job gathering all of our data and helping us put it together and he's helping me with the integration report. You're seeing, in your board packet, you got a very rough first draft of the Achievement and Integration Grant. On your table, you got a more complete second draft of what that Achievement and Integration Grant will look like. Tonight, we're just going to show you a very simple overview of what's in that very complicated packet. And then between this meeting and, and the next meeting, you'll get the final complete draft and we're going to ask you to vote on that two weeks from tonight. So, tonight is not a voting night, it's just an understanding night and Jared and I are going to go through just a handful of slides to explain what we would fund with the Achievement and Integration Dollars over the next three years. So, the legislature approved the Achievement and Integration Grant for a three-year time period and the money's going to be used to help us close the achievement gap and to promote integration experiences for our students. I see this integration grant as a key component of what will be the World's Best Workforce Plan here in St. Louis Park. So, this grant, this plan is going to be embedded in the World's Best Workforce Plan.
So, looking, looking forward briefly, it was required that we had at least one achievement goal as well as at least one integration goal as a part of our plan and that's what's a part of that unfortunately, large packet that each of you have. And with our achievement goals, we chose to have one goal centered on closing the math achievement gap, another goal centered on closing the reading achievement gap and for our integration goal, we have that aligned directly with the WMEP integration goal and the WMEP goal that we have is just focused on having opportunity for equal engagement in all programming for each of our students throughout the WMEP member districts. So, moving forward, looking at our first goal, to close the math achievement gap, there are four activities that we're going to look at as a part of that process. As we move into our new middle school model, we will offer an additional math, an additional math class. It's a support class that's being designed by Carrie Ross and is what, in addition to that at the middle school, we will have a HAP teacher for our High Achievement Program and that is going to be similar, going to be more coordinated in the future to our High Achievement Program teacher that we have here at the high school. And lastly, our fourth activity is partial funding for our IB coordinators at Aquila, Peter Hobart, and Susan Lindgren Elementary Schools.
And for our reading goal, we have several funded activities, a middle school reading teacher for support classes. I'm going to go back and refer to the previous slide too because you saw that same item on the previous slide for math and explain that a little further. Our, our new model at the middle school is going to give us a couple of big advantages. Right now, we are very limited in the amount of time we can put on math instruction. So, if you're a middle school student and you're struggling in math, you get one class period a day to work on math. In the new model, if you're struggling in math, you're going to get two class periods per day to work on math. That's a significant difference. The first class will be with a mainstream math teacher and the second class is the class that's going to be funded out of this, out of these grant dollars. I've called it an acceleration class, we've called it a catch-up class. Here, it's, it's just called a support class, but these are the classes that we're designing with the help of Carrie in both math and reading at the middle school. I think this is going to be a significant advantage for our students who are behind in middle school. Another significant advantage that's not part of this grant, but I can't help but say it because it was on our agenda, agenda tonight, is all-day kindergarten. Our best chance of closing this gap is to do it as fast as possible in the early years and the number of minutes on task next year compared to this year is not even comparable when you compare all-day kindergarten to half-day kindergarten. So, the amount of literacy experiences our young students are going to have, the amount of math experiences our young students are going to have, the first day in the door of kindergarten, it's going to be a huge benefit to us in St. Louis Park. Getting back to this slide, so the reading goal, the funding would support a, a middle school reading support class teacher, three paraprofessionals who are working in the Read 180 Program in the elementary schools, part, part of an equity coach, which aligns with the, the QCOM model you heard a little bit out of the high school report. I want to take a minute to explain that too. We're working to use our QCOM dollars differently next year and, and the, the plan would call for using those funds to provide coaches that would coach classroom teachers directly on how to close the gap in their classroom. We've attempted it at the high school this year, it's gone well. Thing I like about it is it's very personal. It's personal between the coach and the teacher and each teacher is different and each teacher's classroom is different. The coach is able to spend significant time with each teacher and address whatever needs they, they may have that, and, and judge the results based on closing the gap. So, this is putting a little bit of money into that program. And then CED, which is Seeking Educationally, help me, help me back there, Seeking Educationally Equity, can't remember the acronym, but it's, it's Diversity Training for our staff. I spoke to the CED class not too long ago and it's a great group of people who are, again, learning what they can do to change their instruction to have all students perform better and close that gap. So, portion of the funds going to achievement goal number one, which is math-related, a portion going to achievement goal number two, which is reading-related, and Jared's going to take us through the third part.
The integration goal?
Yep. Oh, I guess I'm going to do that. I'll jump in and finish that one too. The third part has to do with integration of our students across the WMEP districts to support the transportation of our students as they cross districts and attend WMEP schools, to provide opportunities for students who may not otherwise be able to, to attend our field trips. And then finally, for Plato Credit Recovery Classes. That takes a little bit of explaining too. We've had very good success using the Plato online classes for helping students retake classes they took first here at the high school and then failed and so they have to retake the classes. So, they can either retake those classes here at school or they can retake them online under the supervision of a St. Louis Park High School teacher. That's been extremely successful at maintaining our student population here in the building. Before this, we had many students that would not pass a class and then they would leave the school to go to another place to retake the class. Plato allows those students to remain at the school, stay part of our school community and end up graduating here at the high school. So, this is a very quick overview of a complicated plan that you will get another copy of between this meeting and next meeting and then we'll be coming back in two weeks with a recommendation to approve the plan. And we are here to answer questions.
I've got a couple of questions, but first, at one point a few years ago, we were considered Rachel, as a district racially isolated from Edina. So, I don't know if that's changed and maybe we aren't anymore, but I just want to make sure it's, it's, we're not. Jared shaking his head.
Yeah, no, I've been assured by a couple of staff members at MDE that we are no longer considered a racially isolated district.
Okay, that's good to know. The second has to do, and, and maybe I need to study the requirements of the plan, but I'm not understanding quite why the WMEP integration goal, that WMEP is trying to increase the number of English language learners and highly mobile students, why that's here? Or do we just need to state one goal from the collaborative that we belong to?
That's exactly correct. We do need to choose one goal from the collaborative that we align to and we need to work with that goal. And that is a part of the legislature and that is a part of what MDE has communicated to us.
And so, our work would be to try and see if more English language learners or, and homeless and highly mobile students are interested in attending what spots we have in the fair schools?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Because our strategies are not related to that. Our, our strategies seem to be good, but they are different.
I, I understand what you're saying and yeah, it's some of that, I understand how it's not completely clear there, but some of that with the transportation piece as well as the field trip is the best way for us to align to it. I think that's.
Yeah, and we have to include the transportation, that's important. And I know it's the first year with this new format and the requirements as well as format are not very clear. Everybody's trying to figure this out.
Right, right.
That, that helps me there, okay.
And perhaps I should mention for our folks at home that there have been significant changes to this from years past, which you were kind of alluding to with just different requirements from what is being required of us as well as accountability on the backend. And so, that's part of the new learnings for us as a district as well as for MDE as a state, so.
You know, maybe Julie, are these the dollars, the integration dollars that the state was thinking about getting rid of and then they had a task force and they didn't know what they were going to do and were kind of limbo for a year and this is what they've come up with is we're going to give grant dollars for a year. I mean, is that?
They, this is what they passed last year, which includes the increased emphasis on achievement and it changed all the definitions and how you use it, says eighty percent needs to be go, put more restrictions on it, eighty percent going to students. And then there's some incentive potential funding, which isn't really discussed here. But yeah, they totally strange, changed the structure of the funding and the requirements to obtain it.
Are the dollars essentially the same though? Like, I know we budgeted on the side in case we didn't get the integration revenue, we did that like a year or two ago, but are essentially the dollars the same?
I think we come out roughly awash and.
We are, a slight decrease, but it's minimal.
I think that's.
Thank you.
Needed for tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is the School Board 2014-2015 Tentative School Board Meetings. We have these in our packets, folks, if you can take a look at those. They're going to come up on the action agenda. The one change I would note is our May 26th meeting is a Tuesday because Memorial Day falls on Monday, May 25th as proposed. Go ahead, Julie. Just again, making sure that we've looked at holidays and I'm, I'm glad that we had the attachments, but a lot of the spring holidays are 2014 dates and the spring dates we're approving are 2015. So, I don't know if we've looked at 2015 dates.
I did look and I did consult with a few folks to make sure that I was recognizing a high holiday versus a, not a high holiday. Some of the dates were in the spring, so I did consult, yes.
Seeing no for the comments, we'll bring this back up when we get to our action agenda.
Well, hopefully we can see this on the screen, but this is something for those that don't know what this is. This is a quarterly report that I show periodically every quarter to show, it basically compares our spending in the current year compared to the spending patterns in the prior year to give us an idea and a tool, not necessarily going to be absolute, but going to give us a tool to see where our spending patterns is this year compared to last year and come up with a bottom line as far as a percentage of spending to determine if we're, we're on track with our budgets. What's a little bit more difficult this year with this quarterly report is this December report doesn't necessarily show the budget amendments, which we actually had approved in January, so that's not reflected in here, about eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand, I believe it was. But also, this is a contract settlement year, so we're not going to have that retroactive pay, retroactive pay included in here at this point in time. So, it's, it's a tool that can help us, but it's, like I said, it's not necessarily going to be absolute until we know for sure what those settlements are going to be. But with that in mind, I do anticipate that those settlements and those budget amendments to pretty much wash at this point in time, but looking at this, in, in March, we'll know a little bit more better as far as what that may look like. But for this report, we can at least take a look at, at the bottom line and basically what I mean by that bottom line is the total general fund excluding the health insurance payments and the liability. Basically, the health insurance payments and the liability are just showing what we're capturing throughout the year for the health insurance payments and, and it's always going to be a catch-up process. So, looking at that, it's pretty, it's pretty comparable to the prior year and we're actually doing a little bit better off in capturing those payments through the payroll deductions that we are processing through our payroll. But really, the line prior to that, saying the total general fund, where I believe it says thirty-nine point or thirty, yeah, and thirty-nine point three percent compared to the prior year, we're a little bit higher than what we were in the prior year, but equating that to dollars, it's, it's not too much dollars because we actually were, last year had a windfall at the end of the year. So, what I anticipate from this is that we are actually going to be more in line with what our budgets were than having that windfall. And looking, you know, line by line, there's some differences line by line in the different programs, but looking line by line, it really kind of washes with the different lines. It's, it's, you know, sometimes we had budgets in a line item where the expenditure. It's, you know, sometimes we had budgets in a line item where the expenditure actually went to a different program, so I'm not too, I'm not concerned about that, it's just making sure that that bottom line is in line with where we were last year, and I, like I say, anticipate that we're not going to have as much of a windfall as we had in the prior year, but I anticipate that we are in line with our budgets at this point in time. So unless we have any further questions, that's all I have. Thank you, Sandy. We're good to go on that. Next up is the Consent Agenda. Moved by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Karen. I'll comment after we have voted on the agenda, I believe, or on the consent agenda, on the retirements, but is there any discussion other than that? Okay, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstaining, carries, 7-0. And on the agenda, we have just approved nine retirements, which I, they're all, people have had many years of service with us, so I assume they're all happy to be doing this. Is that true, Kimberly?
That is correct. We've seen lots of happy faces, lots of excitement for bright futures and new careers, and just a little bit of balance in life, as I hear a lot of.
And I just want to note the retirements that we'll be having, mostly at the end of the year, there are a couple of that have come a little bit earlier, but most of these are coming at the end of the school year, and thank everyone for their service. And one of those, well, starting, we have Elizabeth Dahl from Peter Holbert, after 20 years of service. We have Jeremy Really, who is a social worker currently at Lenox, and he is retiring after 27 years of service. We have Jean Miller from the high school as a counselor, she's retiring after 21 years of service. We have Lee Abrahamson, another social worker at our high school, who is retiring after 31 and a half years of service. We have Rhonda Jamison, Susan Lindgren vocal music teacher, retiring after 21 years of service. Mary Bloomgren, currently at PSI, she's served at other schools I know, she's our media generalist, and she is retiring after 35 years of service. She is the winner of the most years of service on the list of retirees. We have Bonnie Bogine, or Bogine, do you know? She's a special ed teacher, and she is retiring after 20 years of service. We have Ellen Giordano, an ELL teacher, retiring after 20 years of service. And we have Deborah Porter, a special ed teacher at the high school, and she is retiring after 30 years of service. And so we really want to thank, and then we have one more, Karen Casey, a group leader who is retiring after 32 years of service. She didn't quite beat Mary, but she came close. And so this is just a phenomenal number of years of great service to our students and our student and teacher staff, family, community, and we really want to thank, thank all of them and wish them the best on this new venture, the next chapters of their lives. So thank you. Now we're moving on to the Action Agenda, and the first action item is approval of the school board meeting dates. It is recommended that the board approve the tentative school board meeting dates for 2014-2015 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Move, second.
Moved by Bruce, seconded by Julie. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to the next action addenda, action item, it's the 2014-15 Calendar Change Approval. It is recommended that the board approve the proposed changes for the 2014-15 school year calendar as presented, and I presume these are the changes by Karen Ross presented. Okay, is there a motion? It's moved by Karen, second.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries, 7-0. Next, we have approval of employment contract, Children First Coordinator covering four years. It is recommended that the board approve the employment contract between Independent School District Number 283 and Karen Atkinson, Children First Coordinator, for the 2011-12 year, 2012-13 year, 2013-14 year, and 2014-15 year as presented. And Ms. Hurcott, would you like to present it, so we have something to discuss and vote on?
Absolutely. We, again, this is a little, an unusual contract in that we have an agreement, we actually have a partnership with the city of St. Louis Park, as well as Park Nicollet Foundation. Ms. Atkins actually works with us on behalf of Children's First, and the superintendent, obviously, is her direct supervisor in this process. All the funds for this position and any benefits, fringe benefits that go along with it, are actually fundraised by Ms. Atkinson herself. So we did negotiate this within the parameters supported by the board and provided by the board, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, first, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll move to see if there's any questions or discussion. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Move approval by Julie, is there a second? Second by Jim. Now, is there any further discussion or question? I have one. I know there was some conversation about, isn't it the Park Nicollet Foundation that partially funds this?
That's correct.
And there was some discussion about there may be changing their funding streams, and at least as to Meadowbrook, are they going to be funding this, do we know, through this particular calendar, or this particular contract that we're voting on, or are those changes coming after that?
I haven't heard that any changes are going to be made. Perhaps Mr. Metz could speak to that.
I know they are continuing to help with fundraising, and they basically serve as the fiscal agent. They're the bank for the funds that are raised, so they don't necessarily contribute them or raise them, but they act as the fiscal agent.
Okay, thank you, that's what I needed to know. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries, 7-0. Next on the agenda, glad you're back, Mike, is approval of the tentative employment contract between the Park Association of Teachers, 2013 to 2014 and 2014 to 2015. It is recommended that the board approve the employment contract between Independent School District Number 283 and the Park Association of Teachers for the 2013-2014 school years as presented. Why don't we take a brief presentation, and then we'll entertain a motion?
Absolutely. As you know, we spent a number of months working with our teachers and through the negotiation process to get to where we are today. I think it was an excellent process, lots of good conversation. We came away with some definite support in terms of looking at our hiring processes in that we were able to reduce steps one and two from the teacher salary schedule, so that will help us start our beginning teachers or our less experienced teachers at a higher rate of pay. In addition, we were able to add another step for our more senior teachers, as 67% of our teachers were at the top of that salary structure. I think overall, they were great conversations, and we had an overwhelming, as I understand it, approval by the teachers. Maybe Mr. Nardine, do you remember the numbers specifically?
88% in favor.
88% in favor.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So move.
Moved by Bruce, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken, and this is the Park Association of Teachers contract, any discussion?
From what I saw and heard through the process, I think this is a really solid, solid process. It was tough getting through it because of, you know, we had a referendum in the fall, and that obviously played in with the finances. We've built up our fund balance over the past several years to a really solid point. I think we're in good financial, a good financial situation, and our bond rating improvement has reflected, reflected that. At the same time as this is going on, the teachers had been working very hard, and I think this most recent contract rewards our teachers for the great work that they've done, and given them a well-deserved raise, at the same time being prudent on the administration side and keeping, keeping our fund balance steady into the future. So I thought it was a good, good process, and we worked and did a lot of good give-and-take from my perspective. So thank you, everyone involved.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Joe. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries, 7-0. We have a contract. Next up is approval of changes to the Citizens Bank Accounts and Signers, which I think we've all had in our packet to review those changes. Is there a motion to approve those as presented in our packets?
I'll move approval with the corrected spelling of Joe's name.
Is there a second to the motion? Second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Did you get the correction on that motion? Thank you. All in favor of the motion as made and seconded? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries, 7-0. And last on the action agenda is approval of the 2013 School Closure Make-Up Day. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2013-14 Make-Up Day due to closing of school on February 21st, 2014, as recommended by the superintendent. Superintendent made his recommendation earlier from the podium, which time he took some questions. Is there a motion? Moved by Joe, is there a second? Second by Bruce. Is there discussion?
As I stated before, I'm kind of concerned that we're adding another day at the end of the year, and I'm concerned that there's not content in that day. And as others have said, we're ending the day on Monday or Tuesday, and now it's Tuesday, so it's a concern for me.
I, what makes me okay with this is the, I am convinced that the superintendent has gone through a number of options, none of which I particularly liked, but, and this is the only one that's going to work out, so the Tuesday end is better than the Monday. It's just, it is awkward for the seniors, but I think we can make a valuable day out of it, and I trust the high school will.
Yeah, just not really great choices, and that after we've solved the one problem, how are we going to do the make-up days, we get one more day, and that kind of threw the balance off, so I know there weren't a lot of choices, and I, probably more your decision on how we do it, I think, than ours, so I'll just go with what you have researched and looked at as the opportunities, so.
We're just clarifying, because I was tracking that this is, in total, it'll be our third make-up day, because this has been just such a brutal winter, an uncharacteristic winter, and, but maybe we'll find out next winter whether or not it's uncharacteristic or not, or if we're in the midst of a change. And I would agree, I think, I think the superintendent has looked at a lot of choices, had pluses and minuses to all of them, and I, I really, I feel the most for our seniors, but I think they're going to come back, and they're going to have a day that we're going to make work for them if they make work with us. And frankly, they had five days off for snow days and cold days, which nobody, no other class can probably say in all of...
Let's remind them.
So I want to remind them that they had five days off, give us this day, and come have a great graduation, don't mess it up.
We should add that at least one of those days was right before finals, so you know how many times you thought, gosh, if I had one more day?
Absolutely. So on that note, we'll call, I'll call a motion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? One abstention. Motion carries, 6-0-1. Now we are up to Communications and Transmittals.
We had a really successful meet our Somali neighbor forum in February, and I attended with a number of people here in this room, and it was a great event. There are two follow-up events. The next one is Saturday, March 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at St. Louis Park Library. It's called Koran by Heart. It's a documentary and discussion. It's free, but you do need to register through Hennepin County Library, and the phone number is 612-543-6128, or you can do that online at hclib.org. And then finally, Tuesday, March 25th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Lenox, What You Always Wanted to Know About Islam and Muslims, and that will be a very interesting event, and it's free through communityed.com or 952-928-6442. Thank you.
In the legislature, the governor came up with his recommendations for additional funding for education, which was, I think, three, three and a half million dollars for additional free and reduced lunch. While I applaud that, and we do appreciate it, we have a surplus of a billion-something, and we can do better than that. We can fund education, and we should keep funding education at the forefront of what we are here to do, and when we take this oath as a school board, we take this oath to support the Constitution of Minnesota, which has two mandates, one is roads, the other is schools. And I would like to see the schools get more funding. Our teacher contract tonight, we support our teachers, they're the reasons that we can support our mission here, and to help those teachers receive the adequate pay that they should receive, and they should get more, I want to see that increased. And I urge the governor, and I suggest every member of this board and anybody watching out there in television land, to urge the governor, urge our legislators to fund our schools more adequately. If you take inflation against, and we appreciate what the legislature did last year, we, it's great, but in fact, if you put, add inflation back in, we're up now to 2,003 in our funding levels. That is not okay, and I urge the governor to add, a couple hundred million would be a nice number, at least, to add back to the funding for education in a year which we, in which we have such a surplus. And again, I urge everyone to call your legislators, call the governor, and I would urge everybody on the school board to do the same.
I just want to remind folks about our calendar for April. We have our next, we typically, our next meeting is March 24th, but typically, we meet on the second and fourth, well, anyway, we're meeting differently in April, that's the point. I believe we're meeting April 7th and April 21st. Is that right, Cindy?
Yes.
I believe that's correct. Are they back-to-back? I'm sorry, I don't have that calendar.
The meetings are different in April, so if you're planning on coming, you best check the website and make sure, as must we, so we show, so we show up on, yeah?
They're April 7th and April 28th.
I may have spoke too soon, they're different in April, that I know from our normal, and we just need to double-check those, so that we're all here at the right time.
I'll have those dates at March 24th for you.
We do have a listening session coming up at Peter Holbert on Tuesday, March 25th. It's from 7:00 to 8:30 in the Media Center, and we do ask that people arrive within the first 30 minutes if they're going to be attending, otherwise Jim and I will not stay, but we hope to see everybody who wants to come, come. Thank you.
Great. On that note, is there a motion to adjourn? Second by Karen, all in favor? Aye. Thanks, everybody, we're adjourned.